Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, November 17, 2021. Council will continue to meet in a hybrid format until further notice. We encourage speakers to continue registering and speaking virtually as there will be limited numbers available in council chambers. Our first order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that the comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council and profanity will not be permitted. Once you are called on, please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. We will begin with our registered speakers, the first being Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Beltsuver and New York City, New York Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate 2024, Ala Ko Rini Bobo Yense. Is that profanity, Mr. Lavell? It's haza. But you don't know haza, Nigerian language, like monolingual Obama? You're crazy in the head. It's in Tewa Savage's somebody's son. A concern of council is equity. Ordinances institutionalizing equity, similar to Democratic Party-dominated state capital city governments across the United States, one item, is the Office of Pittsburgh City Council, councilors led by Ms. Caleb Smith, with the Office of Mayor, Mr. Peduto and Mr. Gani coming in, considering ordinances for race-based reparations to materially compensate especially black African American and Native American Pittsburghers for past white European-American Pittsburgher inequities to get greater equity in the city, get greater livability. If so, would Carnegie and Mellon Institutions be targets, or Robert Morris, financier of the American Revolution? If so, should white Pittsburghers expect a special reparations tax? Another item, is Pittsburgh Council under Caleb Smith and Mayor under Gani considering ordinances to focus on race and ethnicity, to base job slot reservations, to favor black African and bronze Latin American Pittsburgher government job applicants over white European but especially Gold Asian Pittsburghers to gain equity? Maybe to get Pittsburgh above 71 on U.S. News Most Livable Cities 150 list? If far east Asian Pittsburghers apply for five Pittsburgh government jobs in February 2022, along with Pittsburghers of African, Latin American, Native American, and European descent, the probability is greater than 0.75 that they will be selected for all five due to a pattern of achievement supremacy by Asian Americans in education, experience, test performance, and social cooperative skills. If so, for the sake of equity, should Asian Pittsburghers expect to be deprived of one job out of five because one is reserved by the city government for black and/or Latin Pittsburghers who possess a less stellar achievement record? I favor achievement-based equivalence using rubrics like diverse information memory files, human, and interdisciplinary international divergence. The Office of Equity was established by Fiat by Peduto. It's authoritarian.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Naomi Mullen, followed by Michelle Nakarati-Chapkus.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Hello?
We hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. The Pennsylvania Constitution states that political powers, that all power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. Where did elected officials get the idea that they are lording over us? How can they make decisions for our community that we have lived in and been property owners in for decades? The PPS Board and Administration created a controversy. After repeated speeches to the Board and City Council, they have not dropped the sale of Bon Air School. It is a crime to use a falsehood to vote, create a resolution, sign a sales agreement, transfer a property, or create a legal contract under a misrepresentation. Officials have a duty to investigate and act against a crime when notified. Again, I notify. Any official who tells us that we, the people of Bon Air, have no standing in this controversy is against us. We are being harmed by this threat. This issue has united our neighborhood regardless of political party or race. We have hundreds of signatures on our petitions to prove the community's support for green space. Significant community concern has been expressed to the Board of Education and City Council all these months since the announcement of the sales agreement for Bon Air School. Perhaps there is a neighborhood busting plan afoot. Blockbusting is illegal. Is there any lobbying or unregistered lobbying taking place? Are any special funds of politicians involved in this noncompliance sale? A senior neighbor whose extended family has lived here for over 100 years told me something very wise. She said that there is going to be a revolution if this keeps up. My sincere, consistent request is that city council create a resolution to block zoning change and support a green space to replace Bon Air School building. Do your part for the environment. Reduce urban heat. Reduce watershed to Route 51. Increase green space to benefit all ages and stages. Protect the children at the playground across the street. Let's make it wheelchair accessible to allow those who have difficult access to nature the ability to enjoy it. Tear down detrimental problem buildings, not safe, stable neighborhoods. You want to reduce watershed to Route 51, and this is your opportunity to help that need. Investigate fraudulent acts by PPS Administration, Board, and contractors. Oversight is needed to avoid bad actions like poor roundabout placement. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Michelle Nakarati-Chapkus, followed by Kevin Quisenberry.
Good morning. Michelle Nakarati-Chapkus, Executive Director of Women for a Healthy Environment, located in East Liberty. Lead poisoning has permanent lasting effects from lower IQ and behavioral issues to organ damage and speech and hearing problems, and no cure. Science has proven that there's no safe level of exposure to lead for a child as their growing brains and bodies absorb it readily. None. Yet the damage caused by this pervasive norotoxin is completely preventable. The way to stop children from being poisoned by lead is to prevent exposure to lead in the first place. This is the premise that continues behind the Pittsburgh Lead Safe Law. The idea is simple. Protect children in the places where they are exposed to lead. The goal is to address these common pathways of exposure to lead. Why bother? Across Allegheny County, 2,150 children were diagnosed with elevated blood levels from 2016 through 2020, and the numbers for 2020 here and across the nation are climbing. I spoke at a previous Standing Committee about the Pennsylvania Department of Health's report of 2020 that showed that children in communities of color have higher rates of lead poisoning. During this year's National Lead Poison Prevention Week, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention announced it updated its blood reference level from 5 to 3.5 micrograms per deciliter in response to the Lead Exposure Prevention and Advisory Committee's recommendation, which was made in May of 2021. That means that the data, those numbers I shared earlier, will continue to likely rise, perhaps exponentially. This reference level continues to be lowered because the CDC and others, such as children's health experts at the American Academy of Pediatrics, are clear that there is no safe level of lead. We commend council for allocating $2 million toward implementation of the Pittsburgh Lead Safe Law. An analysis of the first draft ordinance conducted by our colleagues at the National Center for Healthy Housing concluded that implementation of the ordinance over a five-year period would cost approximately $2 million. In addition to that, Women for a Healthy Environment has committed to training contractors for free, and nearly 70 contractors have been trained to date. There is no budgetary reason for removing any essential provisions from this ordinance, and we recognize that implementation will take a bit of time, and that is reasonable to anticipate. I shared with some of you recently that last Friday I took a call from a mom of a nine-month-old whose child was recently diagnosed with an elevated blood level of 26. They were as concerned and scared as any new parent would be in seeking resources. What type of repairs are needed in the home? How do they read the report that they receive? Who do they contact to clean the home? How do they do that? How do you provide a baby with calcium, vitamin C, and iron-rich foods that is only nine months old and still nursing and just starting cereal? And just this Monday, I received a call from another parent of a nine-month-old. This is the recommended age for first lead screenings, and this child too was diagnosed with lead poisoning. Again, so many questions and seeking guidance and connection to resources in the community. Two children is too many. One child is too many. And those two stories that I just shared with you, these were just in two back-to-back business days of this week. We must embrace this policy work that is needed rather than be concerned that it's too burdensome and complicated. We must invest the time and the resources needed to ensure that no child is harmed by lead. We want to make certain that these proven and proactive steps are being taken so that when we talk to parents at Women for a Healthy Environment, hopefully down the road through our healthy schools and our healthy early learning programs, we hear that their children are thriving in their green and healthy learning environments. Please continue to work to ensure that we have the strongest lead ordinance in the Commonwealth, one that commits to protecting children where they spend the majority of their days in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Quisenberry, followed by Joy Brunstein.
Hi, good morning. My name is Kevin Quisenberry. Thank you for the opportunity. I just want to repeat the sentiment and some of the comments of my colleague, Michelle Nakarati-Chapkus. I'm the Litigation Director at the Community Justice Project, which is a law firm part of the Legal Aid Network in Pennsylvania. I work here in our downtown Pittsburgh office. We represent exclusively low-income folks, you know, in our work. My comments today, again, are made on behalf of myself and my organization and as a member of the Get the Lead Out Pittsburgh campaign, and my comments are focused on the Pittsburgh Lead Safety Law introduced three weeks ago by council, Bill Number 2101. This is a very important bill, and we commend you for introducing it. Today, I want to share a little of my own experience working with families over the past several years who have been impacted by lead poisoning in the city. And like Michelle, I want to urge you to strengthen this bill to make it as protective and comprehensive and equitable as possible, and then enact this important legislation. For the past several years, my colleagues and I at CJP have been actively trying to provide assistance to families who were impacted by lead poisoning. We've been working closely with organizations who have participated in the Get the Lead Out Pittsburgh campaign in addition to organizations, you know, who work together in the, let's say, Allegheny Coalition. We've been doing intense outreach, you know, meeting with, hosting events, having calls with family centers, community centers, service providers, DHS folks, to try to make sure that every family in the city of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County who has a child who gets exposed to lead has access to a pathway for assistance and services. Every time we engage with the family who has a child with elevated blood lead, you know, we have a game plan we try to work out with them, which includes, first, referring that child over for early intervention services and screening to make sure that whatever damage has occurred and is occurring is identified and that the family is taking steps to try to mitigate that damage so that that child can be ready for school when they become school age. Second, we have to identify the source of the exposure, you know, and oftentimes that winds up meaning we need to get a lead risk assessment done in the home to identify those sources. Third, we have to resolve those sources, remediate those sources. And this is a hard issue to deal with, especially for renters, especially for lower-income renters who are our clients. Through the last three or four years, we've helped a few dozen families through that process, trying to develop an individualized plan of action to deal with this problem for their children, and either remediate the issue or move away from it. And it's been helpful to those families, but what I want to stress is, this approach fundamentally is a reactive approach. We are trying to help families with kids who have already been poisoned, who have already been damaged, and that's the fundamental flaw with the approach. We have to shift to a prevention model, a prevention approach, where we proactively seek out and identify lead hazards and prevent kids from being exposed to those hazards so that those long-term lasting impacts that Michelle talked about are avoided in the first place. This really is an equity issue. I can tell you that virtually all of the families who we've represented and assisted over the past several years have been African-American longcome households or immigrant families, you know, also longcome households, usually renters, you know, in housing where deferred maintenance has led to deteriorated, you know, paint, although there have been lead-in-soil examples and lead-in-water examples. We applaud council, you know, for this legislation. This is the opportunity to shift our approach to a prevention model. Let's be bold. Let's be proactive. Let's make this bill as strong as it can be, utilizing the models around the country that have proven to be effective at preventing lead exposure. Let's strengthen this bill and get it enacted. Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for your work on this issue.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joy Brunstein, followed by Amanda Ready.
Currently muted.
Okay. Am I unmuted? Okay, sorry about that. Joy Bronstein, Squirrel Hill, and a mother of two small children. I work on the Get the Lead Out campaign with my colleagues who you've just heard from for Clean Water Action. I'm the Western Pennsylvania Director of Policy and Development for Clean Water Action, and that's a position that I've held since June of 2000. I applaud your work to make Pittsburgh lead-free, but it's time to actually be accountable to your promises on behalf of the children and families that Michelle and Kevin just spoke about, and all of the other ones that we haven't heard from. In 2020, unanimously passed a resolution to enhance public awareness and commit to drafting and introducing legislation that will prevent the Pittsburgh community from being further poisoned by lead. That was in October of 2020. For the entire time since then, plus the months before that I've been working with my colleagues on this issue, we've been diligently providing you with the data and the model of legislation that you asked for and that you need to protect children and the community at large by fully addressing lead hazards in all of the sources that they come from. This includes rental properties and child-occupied facilities, lead hazards that are caused by repairs and renovations, and painting work and other construction work that disturbs lead-based paint. This includes lead hazards caused by demolitions that stir up lead dust and other lead that's found in the soil and in our drinking water. I'll keep my comments brief, but I want to urge all of you to make sure that the ordinance that you ultimately pass, and I have every faith that you will pass an ordinance, is going to be the best and most protective one that you possibly can. You have the tools at your disposal to do this and protect all of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amanda Ready, followed by Sarah Goodwin.
Thank you, council members, and good morning. I am Amanda Ready, the Executive Director of the National Center for Healthy Housing, or NCHH. NCHH integrates advocacy, evidence-based research, and community capacity building to reduce health disparities by addressing their root causes. The center has been instrumental in the development and implementation of best practices and policies related to lead hazard control over the last 30 years, and our staff are widely regarded as international experts on the topic of childhood lead poisoning and lead hazard control. Childhood lead exposure, as we have heard, and the racial injustices it perpetuates, is preventable. And collectively, the suite of measures included in the previous version of the Pittsburgh Lead Safe Law under consideration by the council represent some of the most powerful tools we have to fight it. Residents of Pittsburgh are already supported by some key programs, both governmental and non-governmental, that can help identify and reduce exposures to lead, but all too often, these services are not available until after a child has already been exposed and harmed. Ultimately, we need to stop relying on a system that uses poisoned kids to find lead hazards, and focus on finding and eliminating exposures before children are harmed and before they and society are robbed of their future potential. Preventing lead exposure before it occurs helps to ensure that all children are able to arrive at school ready to learn and thrive, and provides a significant return on investment, and we are happy to provide additional details to the council if helpful. The original ordinance was designed with a package of measures that complemented not only the existing services but also each other, each provision acting on different pathways to exposure and serving the needs of different populations, but all working together toward the goal of preventing exposure before it happens. These measures, which include proactively inspecting rental units for lead hazards, providing financial supports for property owners to make needed repairs, ensuring lead-safe work practices are used during demolitions and in residential renovations without increasing existing requirements for contractors, reducing exposure to lead in drinking water, and supporting tenants who live in units with lead hazards, all of these things work together to protect residents from preventable exposures. It is particularly worth noting that these policies, programs, and services have already been effectively implemented in other communities, and we commend the leaders in Allegheny County and the city of Pittsburgh who have drawn on these models in designing the original ordinance. It is also worth noting that the availability of American Rescue Plan Act funds provides a unique and key opportunity for Pittsburgh to invest in these proven strategies, and having spoken with key stakeholders in the city and county, including the excellent and impressive team at the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, PLI, we are fully confident in the city's ability to build on the models and lessons learned from other communities and implement the original ordinance provisions effectively and equitably. We work with communities across the country, and it is my professional opinion that stripping out key provisions related to permitting, demolitions, water filtration, and financial supports for property owners and tenants will make the ordinance more difficult to implement and is likely to result in less equitable outcomes. I urge the council to consider the recommendations that will be put forward by Women for a Healthy Environment, the Community Justice Project, and other stakeholders, and to reinstate key provisions of this ordinance to prevent another generation of kids from being unnecessarily poisoned. Thank you.
I do not see Sarah Goodwin with us. Therefore, our next speaker is Ikahana Hau Makina. Please take yourself off of mute.
Greetings and good day. My title is Ikahana Hau Makina. I am the Grand Inca of the Eric Austin Federation of Aboriginal American People. I would like to address to the members of city council the very important task ahead. The days that lie ahead and the things and decisions that are made in the days that lie ahead are solely based on the consciousness of how you apply the law. The Constitution states in Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, "And excluding Indians not taxed." It's in the Constitution. I did not write it myself, however, that is the supreme law of the land. With that being stated, the only honorable thing to do is to acknowledge the Aboriginal American people here still on this land. It is of vital importance that we are at this table to discuss all matters concerning our land, our resources, and our people who have been marginalized, who have been casted out and left out of the equation when it comes to equality. It's obvious that we have a problem in America. We have a problem right here in this city. As family members are mourning their loved ones because of the training, the lackluster training that the police officers receive, and then they're out on the streets patrolling the streets and treating us as enemies. I would employ the city to look very closely at the people you are hiring to do that job. Jim Rogers is deceased because an overzealous police officer who should have never been a police officer for kids' lives. There are countless other stories such as Jim Rogers that need to be closely examined. An atonement, restitution needs to take place, and healing needs to take place for families of hurting, such as even my own. My brother's life was taken due to the negligence of police officers recklessly running through town without regard for human life. Michelle Rankin, Jerome Smith, I will continue to say their names. Now is the time for accountability. Now is the time for justice. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Joanne Slomnicki Cohen.
Thank you, Councilman Lavell, and good morning, and thank you to Mr. Feiner for running the technology. I'm happy to actually be on. Good morning, and thank you to the esteemed body here for the privilege to address you. My name is Mrs. Joanne Slomnicki Cohen. I'm a proud and grateful graduate of the Mayor Civic Leadership Academy and the Citizens Police Academy. I'd also like to extend a mazel tov to the Reverend Councilman Burgess for, as he announced a few weeks ago at the end of a council meeting, attaining the recognition and status tantamount to being a Baptist bishop, if I understand correctly, and to accept his open offer to anyone watching to help anybody in the viewing audience, and I accept that, and I will conscript him to help me. I believe in faith, informed behavior, and policies. I want to speak to the budget considerations that are coming up regarding infrastructure funds, which I feel should, and I hope do, apply also to the current stock of properties owned by private landlords, which I think many, without the technical whatever of affordable housing, do try very hard to make the housing that they offer affordable to the people that live there, and that goes across many ranges. I think this group is treasured and needs love too, and a lot more value and respect because it's a critical linchpin in affordable housing. I would like the policy to be stabilized in place, which kind of reinforced. Some of the people prior talked about doing that with regard to helping with lead matters, but there are different matters that landlords need help with in order to make the numbers add up and be able to keep people and also do the repairs. And I would like to move away from the, excuse me, one second, what I, on my back, have found to be capricious and predatory use of land bank conservatorship tactics, which are currently rife with insurmountable double standards and an uneven playing field, and can very easily and are being subject to abuse and can be and are being tantamount to institutionalized theft. I would like us to stabilize properties in place, look at the best interest of the house, and not worry so much about how poor or how many extra few dollars a landlord might have. If it's a block and the whole block needs a little bit of a facelift, or the whole block needs furnace or sidewalk, then just do it. It's cheaper than trying to mow the lawns of abandoned properties. I'd like to see us invest in schools for landlords who would like to be their best, and tenants who can, and who can both be certified as their best, because the demographics are going to change as to who's a landlord and who's a tenant. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Are there any speakers here with us in chambers that wish to come before council? Please do so now, and please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak.
Good morning, council. Some of you, Tim Stevens, Chairman of Black Political Empowerment Project, 2201 Wiley Avenue, Hill District. Some of you might remember the letter that we sent on April 20th, 2021. It happened to be read at the same hour the decision was reached in the death of George Floyd, where we called upon council to consider changes in traffic legislation. So we're here today to follow up on that. My theory has been... My theory has been that for too many years, negative things have happened as a result of traffic stops, locally and nationally. Statistics show that historically there are often significant racial disparities demonstrated in traffic stops, both locally and nationally. We believe from the perspective of BPAP's Coalition Against Violence, that fewer traffic stops will reduce the number of violent interactions between citizens and police that far too often result from so-called routine traffic stops. The Black Political Empowerment Project therefore requests all council members to support the newly proposed legislation to lessen the impact of traffic stops in Pittsburgh, or define some sort of legislation that the majority of City Council can accept to reduce traffic stops in Pittsburgh. With Philadelphia having passed new traffic stop reform legislation recently, though we advocated for such passage long before Philadelphia passed its legislation, we feel that it's certainly time for Pittsburgh to follow the lead of the city of brotherly love and to pass traffic stop reform legislation in Pittsburgh. The time is now. We thank you for your consideration of that request. We also want to support those who are on the call with regard to lead exposure. It affects so many children, particularly poor children and black children and brown children in Pittsburgh and across the country. So do what you need to do for that. We also remind you of our request to look at how we're using our tasers in Pittsburgh. I was one of those, and BPAP was one of those organizations that supported the use of tasers, but we don't want it to kill people. Also, we addressed the issue of public housing, those conditions that were so horrible. We ask that as council, you do what you can to do that, and also continue the work that you're doing. Thank you so much.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith.
Yeah.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair. Eight members present.
I have a motion to waive the rules of council.
Second.
Thank you, and I just want to make a motion to amend. Then we're going to hold for a public hearing.
Which bill?
What bill?
What bill?
Offset mention.
Mr. Chair. I was muted.
I'm sorry. I was at a little disadvantage. I did not hear what bill we were holding.
So we're bringing Bill 1986 to the table. It relates to the Social Security offset.
Okay.
We want to put an amendment by substitution.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? The bill is now amended. Madam President.
I make a motion to hold for a public hearing, which is actually scheduled for tomorrow at six.
Second, very brief discussion.
Discussion.
Yeah, thank you. Madam President, good morning.
Good morning.
Are Councilman Coghill and I listed on the amendment by substitution?
Actually, just, I think just I am.
Would you like to be added?
Yes, please.
We'll add every, we'll add.
All five?
I don't want added. We'll make sure we add everyone to the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So now we're on the bill as amended. Yes, motion, sorry, motion to hold is on the table. Any discussion? Councilwoman Wilson.
Could someone just explain what the amendment was?
Well, I think it was just technical.
Which I know. So you should have the amendment in front of you. Looks like this. The law department.
The law department had to make some technical changes to it in order for it to be appropriate for tomorrow's public hearing.
Yeah. Oh. It's in front of you.
And tomorrow, like, are we running out of time for?
The public hearing was already scheduled.
It was already scheduled.
But we wanted to have the appropriate bill in front of the public when they asked.
I understand. Yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Bill will be held for cablecast public hearing, which is scheduled for tomorrow at 6:00 P.M. That now moves us to the first heard paper of the bill under Finance and Law chaired by myself, Bill 57.
Bill 57 ordinance, amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinance is Title II, Fiscal Article Five, Special Funds, Chapter 237, the City of Pittsburgh's Park Trust Fund to conform with the Home Rule Charter, Article Nine, in order to establish the creation of the Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Thank you. So we have had this bill on and off the agenda for quite some time, and Madam President has encouraged us to come to some resolution today, if we can. Absolutely. And so we, I think, have, just to recap, established the Parks Trust Fund as we were required to by law last December in 2020. And I just want to reiterate that because it's been a very long year and a half, and a couple of weeks ago, we were all confused at the table about that, but we did create it in December 2020. So it has been in place for nearly an entire year and has collected some nine and a half million dollars. Those funds are proposed in Mayor Peduto's proposed operating and capital budgets, and I think that we're all pretty happy with that it's consistent with what we all expected, that there's a portion, maybe a third, that's allocated to increasing staffing and maintenance at our parks, and that portion is in the operating budgets, and you can look for that if you can see the budgets online. And then there are capital funds proposed that are for mid and small parks, as we expected as well in all of the public discussions that have been going on mostly during COVID for the last year and a half. So I just want to remind the public that they can go and see that. The bill that we have in front of us today has an amendment that's been kind of rolling on, and it just shifts where the authorizations originate, or the process for authorizations, I should say. So not the origination, but just the voting process of it, so that it requires a council vote, as do most authorizations. So if you'll remember, two years ago, I used to say, no one really wants this $10 million a year fund to operate like the Mellon Park Tennis Bubble Trust Fund, which is a very small trust fund each year, which we allow the Parks and Rec Department, I believe, to just spend as needed. If there's a rip in the tennis bubble, they can just use those funds and patch the tennis bubble. But this is more significant, there's more public interest and import and impact that's available, and so we want to make sure that any of those allocations are discussed at this table, and that's done by requiring the administration to bring the authorizations over to us, so the public can also see them. There's opportunity for public comment, there's opportunity for discussion, and then council can vote on it. In section in front of you, I don't know, there are, and there are yellow copies in front of you, this amendment that we've had active for a while while we discussed with the task force. I think we're all in agreement that this is almost, it does what we expected it to do by requiring council authorization. It doesn't expand language that would add additional public conversation and transparency, and that's, I think, something that council is, you know, still has under consideration and that we may move towards, but that we're not, I don't think we have consensus on yet about what that kind of expanded public conversation might look like. But this will at least shift the process of seeing allocations into more of a public realm. I'd like to suggest an amendment that I believe is just superfluous language. Our Budget Office believes is superfluous language, and I don't want there to be any confusion about how any contracts or RFPs might get expedited. I think that is what council does not want. So just to avoid confusion and to make sure that we just stay consistent with how RFPs and contracts now happen according to Chapter 161, I'd like to suggest an oral verbal amendment. Madam Clerk, in section.
First, we haven't made a motion to amend the bill.
I haven't. So I was just kind of discussing, but if you want me to go ahead and make it, but that's fine. A motion to amend?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'm going to suggest striking the entire sentence in Section 238.03 at the bottom here. It's the last sentence on this page. So it begins, "The annual authorizing resolution may authorize the issuance of requests for proposals." Do you see that sentence?
Yes.
And then it ends with the words, "To Chapter 161 of the City Code for each project."
The entire? Just the entire?
The entire sentence. So.
No, not it.
Second.
Just brief discussion, please.
Councilwoman Kraus.
Hey, Councilwoman Gross.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Yeah, just curious, the other members of the task force are in agreement with the amendment?
You can't see us nodding on your tiny Zoom screen, but they're on.
I apologize. I'm a little under the weather today, and I don't want to terrify people by putting my screen on. So thank you for indulging me, but I appreciate the work of the task force. I know it's been, it's a very complicated topic, but I appreciate the work and I'm happy to support the amendment, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Feel better.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? The bill is amended. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? Council President?
I want to thank the task force for their work on this, and I want to thank Councilwoman Gross and Councilman Coghill and Councilman Burgess. Who else was on the task? I want to thank you all for your work on this, but up until last night, you were still making phone calls and trying to work on this. Councilman Coghill was texting at, I think, at 10 o'clock at night, so I just want to say thank you. I know that you were really devoted into making sure this went well, and I want to thank Councilwoman Gross because she knows I have a, she and I share a concern about this whole thing, and in trying to get to a place where we've all felt comfortable without jeopardizing or not moving things forward and letting the public see that we are continuing to work, it was a difficult balancing act, and I just want to thank you very much for making sure you got us through that, working through that, and thank you all for all of your work on it. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? The bill is recommended. That moves us to our new papers, the first bill being 2147.
Bill 2147, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article Three Organization by adding a new Chapter 141 Offices Generally to establish the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs.
Oh, should do a per.
Second. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Councilman Burgess?
My understanding, and I, my understanding, let me, I guess, let me ask the question. So right now, this office is in the Office of Equity and Diversity, yes?
It's not an office per se, it's an initiative, yes, within the Office of Equity.
Okay, and so what would change by making this its own department? What substantively would change?
Thank you for the question, Councilman. Well, one, we would be increasing our staff size to allow us the continuity, to continue our work, and better position ourselves to be both external-facing and internal-facing. I know as we had previous conversations with members of council a couple of months ago, I know there's something that we kind of heard was the fact, like, you know, people felt hindered from reaching out to us in Welcome in Pittsburgh because we were housed specifically in the Office of Equity. So having our own office positions us to be a better liaison within council, mayor, and other departments. Also, to be able to show the continuity and our dedication to the roadmap in 2015, when the Welcome in Pittsburgh roadmap was launched, it was an actual recommendation that stated that just like other cities across the country, that we would have an office to house Welcome in Pittsburgh and immigrant and refugee inclusion work going further. So having our own office allows us to be able to do that going forward.
And how long has the office been in, how long has the office been in existence?
The initiative, sir? The Welcome in Pittsburgh Initiative?
Yep.
Yes. It's, the conversation started in 2014, where different community members got a chance to weigh in on what the roadmap looks like, but in 2015, it was launched.
Right, so it's been launched since 2015, right?
Yes, sir.
And we did not make, move to make its own department in 2014, right?
Yes, sir, but that's because the conversation started then, and I should put a caveat, I wasn't around during that period, so I didn't know what the conversations was had then. But in the roadmap, it stated like between its launch in 2015, between one to two years that an office would come about, but of course, maybe one reason or the other, that didn't happen. But right now, especially given the transition and having the fact that we've built a lot of rapport around community, and community are concerned about what does this mean? If this is an initiative that was started with Mayor William Peduto, how do we ensure that the work continues beyond his administration? And this is an approach to say, you know what, we did make a promise in the roadmap, and let's actually fulfill that now.
So we didn't move to make it in 2014, we didn't move to make it at office in 2015, we didn't move to make it at office in 2016, we didn't move to make it at office in 2017, we didn't move to make it at office in 2018, we didn't move to make it office in 2019, we did not move to make it at office in 2020, and now in November, what is the date, the 17, a few weeks before the end of an administration, we're now trying to make a structural change to government. I just think, I, first, I think two things. First of all, I think we have an upcoming administration, and I think that that now, in terms of making executive structural changes to the government, should be left up to the new administration. It should not be carried on by the old administration. That's number one. I think that, you know, council is the same. We're going to be the same now as we are next year, right? So our work is going to be continuous, but I think that I will, at least I personally, am not in favor of creating these changes because they are not, they are not super, they're not minor changes, because the next thing that will happen is you're going to ask in the budget for a budget amendment to increase staff, and I think that, so a couple things. I think when we create these individual offices, there also has bad unintended consequences. For instance, I really believe, and I might as well say it publicly, that the Office of Health and, what was it, Health and Safety, Health and?
Community Health and Safety.
Yeah, I believe that should be in the, it should be in the Public Safety Department. Because it's its own separate organization, there are some problems with it. For instance, the social workers can't talk to the police officers, they don't have access to police data because they're not in the Public Safety Department, and so they're sort of out there by themselves trying to do important work, but they can't coordinate with the people who are on the ground doing the work. Where if they were in the Public Safety Office, they could ride in the police cars more effectively, they could be open to sharing data that the police force has because it would be embedded. I think that's not different than this. This is part of equity. Equity is everybody, and immigrants are individual, they're not isolated, right? They're from all over the country, and they have, equity means everybody, it's not just black, everybody. So my own thinking, and now- So my own thinking and now I will, I'm going to motion to hold for eight weeks af, at some point, but my, my advice is for this process to wait until January and give the new administration a chance to organize their vision of government and leave this in the Office of Equity for now. And then, then if that's, you know, um, the work will continue, the initiative will continue, just like it continued in 2014 and 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020 and 99% of 2021, it's already doing what it does. So let's leave it alone. And then in the next year, in January, uh, um, the new administration comes, I think we give them the privilege of organizing, um, their government, um, because right now it's in the mayor's office. And you're trying to take it out of the mayor's office, give it its own, uh, independent agency and I'm, I'm not in favor of it. So I, at some point I will, I'll be motioning to hold for eight weeks.
Thank you. Council President Smith?
I, I do know that we talked about this the other day and that you, um, felt that it would, we should wait, but I do also want to say that throughout this whole process, every one of us has talked to the, uh, future administration and said, if you have any concerns, any issues or whatever, please make sure you talk with us. And, and they have talked with some of us about some things and some things they have said that they're not, um, made, they don't have major concerns. So I would say if we're going to hold it, I would rather hold it until we have an opportunity to talk. I've already spoke with them. So I feel, and I'm sure others have as well, but, um, I already spoke about the, but I just would say, um, I'm in favor of holding for a week or two, but I, I don't think that eight weeks, um, is something I could support.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
Uh, thank you. I am wondering about kind of getting a deeper understanding from council, for, for council about this question of whether the, how it intersects with equity goals and equity work that we have. And I don't mean to take up time in this meeting, but I feel like I am real, now my curiosity is more piqued. I'm going to admit, I haven't spent a lot of time working with the initiative. Um, it's always seemed like a good initiative, um, but this question of does it, should it be an office is a new topic. Um, and so I'd appreciate a briefing if other members are inclined to, to hear more about what the work has been and is the rationale for the, this change, which again is, is a change that is, um, you know, not just a resolution, but really does make it a budgetary change in the org chart. Um, so generally it's associated just because it wasn't really mentioned in, in expanding staffing and dollars, um, and levels of, um, budgetary authority even. So I'm, I'm just kind of, I think I need to hear more about, um, the rationale and the, um, these goals, which again, we, you know, we did talk about, I think in depth i- in 2014 and kind of like how well have those, those goals been achieved? Are there new and different goals? And I, I, I'm, I'm just admit, I just don't feel like I know enough. Uh, I'd be open to a hold and I'd be open to briefing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If none, real quick, my, my question is what's the budgetary impact of making it a department and where is it being funded from? You know the answer to that?
Yes, I know that, um, we've put in legislation that it would be within the mayor's office and, um, Eva approved. I know that we were going to submit, uh, a budget amendment, um, during the budget process. I, I don't know the figures right now. There was a proposed amount, um, that we shared, um, but it might look different during that period.
Okay, thank you. If we're, if we're going to hold, I would, it'd be helpful for me that prior to bringing it back to the table, that we fully understand the budgetary impact of making it.
Looking to the president, I won't hold for eight weeks. I'll hold for four and they'll give us some chance to, to work through. So motion hold for four weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it will be held four weeks. Were you trying to speak? Where does that put us?
December.
Yeah, December 17th, then.
Before that probably.
There's two more weeks after that.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, budget, excuse me, bill will be held for four weeks. Um, that moves us to bill 2148.
Bill 2148, ordinance, amendment to Pittsburgh City Code Title I Administrative Article Seven Procedures, Chapter 169A Electronic Signatures to mandate the use of electronic signatures by city departments.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Take yours as a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to bill 2149.
Bill 2149, ordinance, amending and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article Seven Procedures, Chapter 161 Contracts by repeal in Section 16139 Environmentally Preferred Purchases in its entirety and replacing it with a new Section 16139 Sustainable and Socially Responsible Procurement.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
Brief discussion.
Gross and then Councilwoman Strasburger?
I was just wanting to let someone from the department talk more about it since I see the director up there and, um, and I don't, and that's it. I just was wanting to hear more.
Uh, let's see, Ms. Ozender with us.
Uh, yes, I'm here and, uh, Grant Urban and Rebecca Kieran from Sustainability, uh, are also, uh, joining us on the call, um, to address any, uh, questions that council may have. Uh, was there, uh, something specific, Councilwoman Gross, or just, uh, a general overview?
Correct. I just wanted to let you have an opportunity to kind of summarize what we're looking at.
Um, yeah, so we did, um, a full replacement, uh, of the legislation, uh, of that section. Um, and, um, basically, um, added some definitions in there for what sustainable procurement was, what socially responsible procurement is. Um, we, uh, added a requirement for, um, in RFPs to have, um, where, where it makes sense to have sustainability, diversity and an inclusion profile of the companies. And, um, basically with, that would be part of, uh, the scoring criteria, um, of the RFPs as well. Um, made a lot of, um, updates to, um, we changed, I, I think the previous, um, language, uh, referred to our construction to be, um, lead sort of lead silver. We changed that to the net zero and to what we're actually doing now. Um, updated, um, things about recycling, um, electronics, um, purchasing, um, you know, um, more economically, or I'm sorry, more sustainable, um, disposable products like paper, um, you know, no styrofoam, uh, things like that. So, um, Grant or Rebecca, do you want to maybe talk a little bit more about, um, the net zero standards?
Technically, I would have to invite them, but.
Oh, okay.
So I've just, I'm, it just raises my, um, recollection that we, at council, we've been wanting to see this kind of scoring on especially large contracts, right? But it's, or significant contracts. And we've, it's been quite some time, but I thought that Councilman Lavelle had actually put forward legislation that we should be able to see percents of, um, WBE, DBE and, uh, and be, I'm sorry, I'm saying it right, MBE. I've forgotten them all. Veterans, there's a.
MWB.
So we can just say MWB. And, um, we've been seeing improvements, vast improvements at authorities. We've had, we've, I've said this before, we've had this conversation before, but we're still not seeing them publicly attached to contracts. And so I'm wondering what the status was. I thought you passed a resolution, Councilman, if you're in permit interrogatory.
Sure.
And we're not, I don't know what happened with that and how does that fit?
We did, we did pass it. Um, this budget season was actually supposed to be the first budget season where the proposed budgets were also supposed to have accompanied with them, a document that said, this is how it will align with our MWB goals and our equity and inclusion goals within the city.
So at the authorities, I, I'm assuming at the other authorities that you all sit on, you see a kind of top sheet that has a percentage that the vendor has committed to. Um, and it was discussed, you know, in every single vote and we're not, we haven't seen that yet. So I'm hoping that we're also getting not just the budgets, but then to authorizations for contracts, right? And so, um, Director, I've still got you at the table, Director Ozinger. I am, this brings up the scoring sheet thing, which came up recently again, that I asked for scoring sheets and I wasn't provided them and was told that you weren't, the OMB wasn't sure that they could provide scoring sheets to council members. This seems like a really great opportunity to kind of, since I have you here, to ask about that. What's the deal with the scoring sheets and what's the big secret?
Um, so, um, couple, couple clarifications, um, first, I, I will definitely address your question, um, on the scorecards, but just to clarify, uh, on the legislation part, um, this is for a different, not just, this isn't for the what, what goes through EORC, this isn't through, for subcontracting. Um, this is for each vendor to like, um, you know, say it's Amazon, right? Um, what they're doing within their own business, um, for employment, diversity, inclusion, sustainability, what are they doing as a company? Um, that's, that, that's what this legislation is speaking to. Um, just to clarify that, this is not speaking to the MWDBE or VOSB, uh, or any of those goals. Um, each of our projects, they do go through the EORC process. Um, they get an approval letter. Um, we could talk to the EORC office, um, Chuck Dorm, um, and his group to see if they can start adding in what the percentages is in their approval letters so that when that EORC approval letter comes with the package, council will see that information. That should be an easy change for, for Chuck to do, but, um, I, you know, needed to furt him. Um, but we can definitely have that discussion with him. Um, as far as the scorecards go, um, law has advised us not to share that with anybody, um, outside of the city, um, or the city side, um, especially at council because you are voting on the product, uh, the project, uh, we should, they advise us to not give out anything to council that is not yet subject to the right to know law. Uh, scorecards are actually never subject to right to know law. Um, but law did not feel comfortable with us providing that to you folks, uh, the scoring information internally until a vote was made. So that, we did that on the recommendation of law. Um, not sure what, um, their reasoning was behind that, but we asked them first because it's not normally something that we do. Um, scorecards are considered, uh, internal deliberation as part of a right to know law. So, um, they're not even subject to right to know to the public. So, um, I hope that kind of answers your question.
I'm going to just kind of restate what I just heard, that the scoring that referring to in bill 2021, 2149 is scoring the, um, the business, socially responsible or not business practices of companies that we buy things from. So procurement. So it's what your example was Amazon or any other vendors, Home Depot where we're buying shovels for DPW or something like that. So it's about buying things, actual physical.
This could be professional services, actually. This would be in the RFP process because we cannot, uh, evaluate, um, in a low bid situation for commodities, we cannot evaluate on any other criteria other than lowest responsible bidder. So this will only be in the RFP process for professional services.
So is Amazon a professional services contract?
No, no. I just threw a name out there that, that people would know. So, uh, a law firm, you know, yeah.
Okay, so that was confusing. So maybe.
Sorry.
Okay, sorry. So not for buying things. So we're not going to score any of the people that we buy stuff from?
No, we are not allowed to do that by law.
All right, so.
But we can, and during the RFP process, we can set our own criteria. Um, so right now we usually give around five points for their EORC package. We'd probably give around the same amount of points for, um, their company's sustainable and socially responsible profile.
So companies that you're choosing to do professional services agreements with, like a law firm?
Correct.
Like a, um, the vendor for screening police that.
Or like, um, for first vehicle services who do our, um, manage our fleet.
Right. So these are the kinds of things that we are buying expertise from because we're not providing the expertise in city personnel.
Correct.
Right, okay. So that's, that's clearer, that's more clear for sure. And so not people that we're buying stuff from and not subcontractors who we're telling to do a job and that they're doing it, not the contractors that are paving roads, not the contractors that are, um, doing construction projects, not the subcontractors. What other kind of subcontractors do we use?
Division.
People that build buildings? All right, okay. And so, so just very narrowly, the social responsibility practices of professional service providers.
Yes. Um, the bill also has some language in it and let me pull it up and see if I can find the exact wording. Um, but there is a section in here, bear with me while I pull the file up.
Here, there's the very next bill, the very next, I'm just going to talk while you're looking. And the very, bill is bill 2150 and it's professional service, uh, on call required to professional IT services, um, not to exceed $500,000. So that kind of contract would be subject to the new scoring.
Correct. Um, there's a section that we put in here about our low bid vendors and let me try and find it. Um, yeah. So one of, one of the main things that we put in, um, in letter E is, um, for us to work with the departments to make our specs and our low bid contracts more sustainable. So on our low bids, we can put some sustainability requirements in those low bids and as long as they, so that's how we will approach it on the commodities end with the way we write our requirements. Um, so, um, like keeping, um, eliminating, um, like excess packaging and things like that, we can, we're going to be working, the next step, once this passes, hopefully, um, our next step is to be working with law to look at our contracts so that we can put some of that language into our low bid contracts so that that's how we can capture this stuff on the commodity side.
That's not in this bill.
It is.
Yeah. Okay, that's in this amendment, I mean.
Yes, that will, that language.
I was sitting here trying to think like. How styrofoam related to law firms? So that's.
Well, the styrofoam is, is.
No styrofoam, good for you, Reed Smith. I mean.
Yeah, no, that's on this section of what the city purchases.
Okay.
So city purchases, um, you know, what we're buying. So we're buying, um, you know, plates for our, our, you know, coffee cups for the kitchen. We don't want to buy styrofoam ones, we want to buy paper.
Okay. So things that we're consuming internally.
Correct.
And then, but not moving out from anything else that we're buying that's not for our internal use. Not yet.
Correct. And that's why we're going to try and rewrite, um, our Ts and Cs to have some sustainability language in there that refers back to this section of code, um, of what it means to basically to be a responsible vendor. Um, they need to be, um, complying with the things that we will be putting in code today about reducing packaging, um, you know, um, delivery emissions, things like that, so.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. I'm sorry, I took up so much time, but I run it.
No problem.
Isn't clear, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for being here today. Um, if someone can please tell me, this is a brand new, this is a replacement of an entire section, so I don't see strikeouts and that's okay, that's fine, because it's a, it's a brand new section, um, that is replacing another. But that way, that way I don't understand or I don't know what was, uh, in existence previously. Can someone speak to the difference between this new updated language and what was in existence previously, uh, which was I guess called, um, environmentally preferred purchases?
Um, yes. Um, I'll do the best that I can because I'm not super familiar with that old piece of code, but.
I'm happy to have Grant Urban or anyone else speak to that if they are, uh, uh, better able to.
Um, yeah, I think, I think Grant would probably be more familiar with the, uh, the old one or Rebecca. Um, but, uh, Councilwoman Strasburger, I can forward you, um, the. But, uh, Councilwoman Strasburger, I can forward you, um, the marked up version. We do have that, um, on a one drive that I can, uh, send to you right now, if you would like to see that.
Grant or Rebecca?
Yeah. I'll, I'll jump in real quickly and, and hand off to Rebecca. So effectively this is a, a modernization of our prior sustainable purchasing code and practice. And so what we've inserted in here is a, a, a couple of pieces of language that, um, bring us up to speed with kind of best industry practices with regards to services and materials procurement. One of the other reasons why this is important is what it does is effectively start to align us with our zero waste objectives. And so one of the important things is you start to work towards, uh, waste reduction is also making sure that you are attentive to what you're bringing into the house, if you will. And so whether that's services or products, this gives us a better idea in terms of how we can better manage, uh, those products as we utilize them and need to find a home for them whenever their useful life is complete. Um, and so that's, that's one of the, the things I mentioned. The second is that we've also incorporated in here some language that aligns us with our work as a city with relationship to the sustainable development goals. And so this gives us, uh, some, you know, better insights as we seek, uh, products and services that start to align those connections with the sustainable development goals as well as kind of our other, uh, E S G or environmental, social governance practices that, administration and council have deployed over the last, you know, uh, eight plus years, I would say. So it's a modernization and update. And so the language, uh, starts to reflect some of that. And Rebecca might have some more technical details.
Yeah. Just on the modernization piece, um, we had out in the original, uh, legislation, it was outlined like the specific types of certification programs, which are a little bit dated. Um, so that, so we, uh, generalize that a little bit more so that we're using the most up to date certification programs. And it requires, um, uh, the procurement team to speak to the sustainability team, uh, to make sure that those are, are always updated. The other thing to note in here also is, um, recycled content of the things that we're purchasing. So, you know, we have a, a recycling program, a lot of those commodity prices are dropping. So we wanted to make sure that we put in here. You know, that, that we're, uh, increasing the demand for recycled content from our own, like recycling, uh, program, if that makes sense.
Yeah. No, that's all great. That's a great explanation. Thank you. And yeah, I appreciate that we need to lead by example. If we're going to ask other large entities and businesses and, um, individuals to take action in their own lives. So this is wonderful. I guess I, that was my main question, but then I was a little bit confused after the last interaction because it sounded like this was only professional licensing agreements, but I do see section C and section D that looks like it's about actual purchasing and procurement of materials and the minimum standards for those. So is this also about procurement of certain materials or purchasing of materials in addition to the licensing agreements or the, professional services agreements?
It, it, it more guides, um, city staff on how we should buy things, that we should, how, what we should be buying as opposed to what we should not be buying. You know, LED lights versus regular light bulbs, um, you know, recycled paper, um, you know, different things like that. Again, uh, that, that's more directs the purchase, cities purchasing habits.
Okay. Gotcha. So in those categories, it is about the purchasing of, of materials, meeting these standards. Okay.
Right, right. And also there's a section that speaks to, um, that we actually, um, as we're standing up our new procurement tool, that, um, as you're placing the, the software behind our beacon website. We are going to have, uh, be able to have an online form with that, um, departments answer questions in. And one of the questions, and there's part of this code is, um, you know, when you were writing your specifications, did you research, um, you know, any more sustainable options, you know? So if somebody's buying a lawnmower and they want us to buy a lawnmower, you know, did you consider an electric lawnmower? Just as an example, you know, um, not that electric lawn mowers would be very feasible, but, uh, and then it says in there, you know, that we should be making more environmentally sound purchases when they're, when it's viable and, um, it's not cost detrimental.
Understood. Thank you very much for the explanation. That's all I have.
Any further discussion? First round. If none, second round. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I finally got to the whole text file myself as well. I appreciate, um, that there is a section, um, for DOMI and Public Works about, um, road materials. Um, I just kind of lost it in this very tiny font here on my screen, but I think it said, recycled, like road material where possible and, um, alternative surfacing where possible. And there really are some very cool things that are being tried in other places, recycled plastic roads, et cetera. But I'm really eager to, to, I see a lot of nodding heads. It looks like council is kind of eager to hear more about that. If we could give you any of our prioritization, um, informally here, it looks like that's an enthusiastically embraced opportunity. And it says something more about previous paving and those kinds of things as well, which sometimes are the same kinds of materials. So, um, yeah, so I, I'm glad to see that it isn't only professional services, that there are some non-binding, but suggested, you know, prioritization of looking for environmentally friendly, zero waste materials, if I said that correctly.
Yeah, you're exactly correct. Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Cargill.
Oh, I just really wanted to point out as Councilwoman Gross brought up for paving, I think there was a, and we had talked about this.
Yes, we have.
There's a company in Germany who is recycling plastics and making roads out of it, which I just love the idea. And I can't imagine, I can imagine Councilwoman Gross or, uh, Strasburger probably would be interested in that idea as well. So I would love to explore that, whether we can reach out to this.
Scotland, I actually called them up and talked.
I know.
Last, it was COVID. I don't remember when it was.
Yes, but, uh, but no, I find that very interesting. Um, you know, that would solve a lot of problems and probably, you know, and, and they swear by it from what I read, the little bit I read about it. So I don't know who would reach out from the city of Pittsburgh and just kind of maybe invite them here or, you know, get, give a presentation. Yeah, right, right. I told you I was gonna go, but I was busy that weekend. It's a, so, okay. Now I just wanted to make that comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Interesting.
Yep.
Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, bill is recommended. That takes us to bill 2150.
Bill 2150, resolution authorizing 24 open in professional services agreement with 12 vendors to provide professional services on an on-call basis as required related to professional I T services as needed by the various departments of the city. Each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $500,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options and providing for funding of the cost thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 2151.
Bill 2151, resolution authorizing 39 open professional services agreement with 24 vendors to provide professional services on an on-call basis as required related to professional I T services as needed by the various departments of the city. Each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $250,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options and providing for funding of the cost thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended. We are now into our budget bills. I'm gonna ask the clerk to read bills 2152, 2153, 2154, 2155 together so that we can have a motion to hold until after our public hearings, which they would, they come back to us on December 15th. So motion to hold until December 15th.
Bill 2152, resolution making appropriations to pay the expenses of conducting the public business of the city and for meeting the net charges thereof for the fiscal year beginning January 1st of 2022. Bill number 2153, resolution fixing the number of officers and employees of the city for the 2022 fiscal year and the rate of compensation thereof and setting maximum levels for designated positions. Bill number 2154, resolution adopting and approving the 2022 capital budget and the 2022 C D B G program and the 2022 through 2027 capital improvement program. Bill number 2155, resolution authorizing appropriations and salaries of the Stop the Violence Fund for the 2022 fiscal year, beginning January 1st, 2022.
Well, no, motion to hold until December 15th.
Motion to hold till December 15th.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All bills will be held. The next three really just allow us to be able to enter into contracts and spend money. So we can pass those today. Bill 2156.
Bill 2156, resolution authorizing the city to participate in an applicable corporative purchasing agreement for goods, materials, equipment, supplies, services, professional services or construction as authorized by the Commonwealth Procurement Code and the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Corporation Law for the 2022 fiscal year.
Any discussion? None. All those, all those in favor say aye. You oppose?
Just call me.
Bill is recommended. Bill 2157.
Bill 2157, resolution providing for the letting of contracts and for the use of existing contracts for the purchase of materials, supplies and equipment for city departments and the maintenance, repair, rental and or leasing, rehabilitation, renovation, inspections or services of silly, city buildings and facilities and for any miscellaneous services in and for any city departments and providing for the payment of the cost for the 2022 fiscal year.
Motion to approve.
Question, seeing that? No, sorry.
I'm sorry. No, I just wanted to clarify, at least for the public. The reason why we're slow to, uh, motion to approve or motion for discussion is because you are not allowed to make a motion. Is that right? That is correct. And I needed that clarification for myself too. So you want to designate me, I'll, I'll do it, you know, but it's, it seems like we have it handled.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 2158.
Bill 2158, resolution authorizing city council to approve intra-departmental transfers throughout the 2022 fiscal year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question.
Issue is that when normally acts as the, as the maker of the motion with the committee that the chair is in. Normally what happens is the president of council typically, um, we normally allow each member to make motions of their own committee. And since the chair cannot under financial law, additionally, the president of council acts, does that courtesy for the financial.
No, I'm, I'm glad you clarified. Uh, I just didn't want the public to think we're slow and behind. That's.
At least it's not here. It's really me that should do it.
Right, yes.
It's my fault. I'm the next up, but I didn't do it. So that's really, I'm, I'm telling myself now.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 2167.
Bill 2167, resolution amending the rules of council, rule four, standing committees, section two and rule five, regular meetings, section one, to provide for certain changes to the order of business in accordance with applicable law.
Motion to hold for executive session?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Executive session will be held. Uh, motion. Bill 2168, we need, and we're going to need a motion after we approve it to amend it.
Bill 2168, resolution authorizing the fee schedule for 2022 pursuant to chapter 170 of the city code.
Motion to amend.
Now we need a motion to amend.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, the, the amendment for the fee schedule is in front of council members. If you had any questions. Any discussion on the amendment? Councilman?
Were these, uh, changes recommended by the, I mean, how did this come over? This come over from P L I or?
Yes. And this will.
Just difficult because we can't see what it was prior.
We can ask to have the original, so you can see what the fee was prior to what it is now. After we amend this bill, we're also going to need to hold this one until December 15th, because this also will be a part of our public hearings.
Yes.
For the budget. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much. Just curious, and if you can't answer this, that's fine. Uh, I'll check in with the clerk. Has the fee for rental registry then be included in this re- restructured fee schedule?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is amended. Any discussion on the bill as amended? If not, we need a motion to hold until December 15th.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be held. Bill 216, actually, sorry, 2169, 2170, 2171, 2172. Altogether, these are all tax-related bills, which also will be held for a already scheduled public hearing. A motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Bill 2169, ordinance, amendment to Pittsburgh code at title two fiscal article nine, property taxes, chapter 263. Real property tax and exemption by fixing the rate of real estate taxation for 2022. Bill 2170, ordinance, amendment to Pittsburgh code at title two fiscal article nine, property taxes, chapter 263. Real property tax and exemption, section 26302. Payment options, discount and delinquency penalties. So as to set the payment, discount and delinquent dates for the 2022 fiscal year. Bill number 171, ordinance, amendment to Pittsburgh code at title two fiscal article seven, business related taxes, chapter 246, home rules tax, section 24603. Declaration and payment of taxes subsection D, so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent home rule tax for the year 2022. Bill number 2172, ordinance, amendment to Pittsburgh code at title two fiscal article seven, business related taxes, chapter 245. Earned income tax, section 24503. Declaration and payment of taxes subsection D, so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent earned income tax for the year 2022.
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing?
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held for cable cast public hearing. Uh, bill 2173.
Bill 2173, resolution authorizing all city departments in conjunction with the department of finance to enter into facilities usage agreement for the purpose of permitting groups and individuals to rent city-owned facilities for recreational and community-focused activities during the 2022 calendar year. This city shall not charge more than $10,000 per rental agreement.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Second.
Councilwoman Wilson?
All right. I don't actually have a discussion about this bill. I just wanted to ask for clarity on, it says public hearing is scheduled for December 30th in the, in the past prior bills. Does that mean, doesn't that mean that we have to hold it?
We held it for the, for the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm just used to seeing, okay. So now as we move forward to the end of the year, we'll start seeing like when it has to be scheduled. Okay. Yeah, I mean, usually it shows up and just says needs to be held for, but we already have the date.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I'm, go ahead. I understand your question now. I mean, because we, we set the budget schedule on the front end and schedule it all the way out so that we know when we can have hearings, when we can have our hearings, our, our, like today, we start at 1:30, we start our budget hearings, but we also have to have public hearings related to the budget. And so the clerk's office on the front end schedules it all the way out so that once the bills come up, we already know our schedule so that we can get through all this.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to understand why the date is, uh, included now.
Yeah, because we set the entire schedule for the budget on the front end. That makes sense.
I do have a question on the bill.
Okay.
Yeah. So I.
Yeah, so I So thank you for calling for, uh, uh, public comment. So I, 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 I was just hoping that someone could come to the table virtually to discuss the extent of this, whether this is really just about the agreement or, and I'll work to get the text file up, but, or whether this is part of, um, a, um, I don't know, redo, rewriting of the language of special events more comprehensively.
Thought it was the former, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
Um.
I mean, it's rental agreement, so I, I, I didn't know if this was going to be a sort of a parallel or, um, complimentary bill to some of the special events changes we're making. I'll get my questions answered after. I'll, I'll support, I support the spirit of this and I'll, I'll support this today and I'll just, I'll look up, um, a little bit more into this after.
Look to see who.
I don't want to hold things up.
You're okay for now?
Yeah, I'm okay for now.
Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Uh, need a motion to approve the invoices?
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh. Uh, friendly amendment, uh, voice, voice amendment, um, under the first item under city council, uh, strike Laura and write Lita, L I T A. Thank you.
Very first item under city council. Laura, she wants it to say Lita.
Okay.
So nothing.
Thank you.
Need further? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the intra-departmental transfers?
They're moved.
Second.
Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfers are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards?
I'm moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor, one new paper, bill twenty-one seventy-four.
Bill twenty-one seventy-four, ordinance, amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title Five Traffic, Article One Administration, Chapter five oh three, Enforcement and Control by Adding a New Section, Section five oh three seventeen, Equitable and Fair Enforcement of Motor Vehicle Laws.
Second.
Um, I have a couple of members. Friday and Monday. On the same place in terms of language.
Could members please speak a little closer to the microphone? I'm having
I'm muted, so it's not close because I'm muted, sorry.
Thank you.
I, again, we've added cosponsors with council, uh, Councilman Bobby Wilson, Councilman Daniel Vale, Councilman Erica Strasberger. Um, I've been talking to the Public Safety Department and we have a meeting with Friday and it's a meeting with, um, myself, um, Public Safety Director, Police Chief, and with Anthony Calkill. If any members up until four want to join on the call, you're welcome. Um, and so I'm going to hold, uh, just to get, to make sure that we're all on the same page and then next week hope to pass it. So that's the process.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Yeah, thank you. Councilman Burgess, I'm on there, right?
Yes, you're already a co-sponsor.
Yeah, okay, cool. Thank you.
So motion to hold one week?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be held one week. Uh, takes us to the Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Calkill, one deferred paper, bill seventeen forty-four.
Bill seventeen forty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a lease agreement with the Flitz Conservatory and Botanical Garden for the city facility known as the Garden Center for a period of ten years and annual rental fee of one dollar per year with the possibility of renewal.
Motion to hold for two weeks.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held two weeks. New papers, bill twenty-one forty-two.
Bill twenty-one forty-two, resolution providing for a supplementary agreement with Allegheny County for local costs associated with the Sixth Street Bridge Project and providing for the payment of local costs thereof not to exceed twenty-four thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Session?
See, I was sleeping there.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill twenty, bill twenty-one forty-three.
Bill twenty-one forty-three, resolution providing for an agreement with Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Department of Transportation for local costs associated with the state Route sixty project and providing for the payment of local costs not to exceed six thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Session? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bill twenty-one sixty-four, ordinance, amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Four Public Places and Property, Article One, Public Rights of Way, Chapter four sixteen, Obstruction by Adding New Definitions and Amending Permitting Requirements for Construction Activities Encroachment and Minor Encroachment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Session? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Land Use Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson, one paper, bill twenty-one sixty-five.
Bill twenty-one sixty, bill twenty-one oh one, ordinance, amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code of Ordinances in Multiple Locations with provisions related to lead safety and mitigation in order to reduce and thereby mitigate the health risk of exposure of city residents and particularly young children to lead hazards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing Officer Wilson?
Discussion. Uh, I would like to I'd like to withdraw the motion if I'm not hold. Yeah, so that's what I thought. So, um, motion to hold on a week.
One week, you said?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. Now bill twenty-one sixty-five.
Bill twenty-one sixty-five, resolution providing for the designation as a historic building under Title eleven of the Code of Ordinances, the certain site known as Engine Company twenty-eight, located at seven hundred Philbert Street in Shady Side in the Seventh Ward.
Motion to approve. I'm sorry, uh, motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held for cable cast public hearing. That takes us to Innovation Performance Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilman Strasberger, first new papers, bill twenty-one fifty-nine.
Bill twenty-one fifty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of innovation and performance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with the change agent training for access to their learning management system and consultative assistant to adapt the city gold belt workshop for e-learning for one year at a cost not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill twenty-one sixty.
Twenty-one sixty, resolution amending, resolution six forty-two, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with Computronics for the provision of permitting and licenses package at an additional cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Motion to approve brief discussion.
Second.
This really is to, um, um, enter into agreement with Computronics to be able to continue to, um, upgrade the work that P L I does in permitting and licensing as part of that package with the technology. Um, it is a step on the way to creating a, you know, an actual one-stop tech trust fund. Um, but, um, uh, this is just sort of this, the stepping stone we need to be able to transition to, um, you know, one-stop completely, which will close down in two thousand twenty-two, but we needed the additional sort of stepping stone to get there. So. We have Director Norman here if we'd like to discuss.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, twenty-one sixty-one.
Bill twenty-one sixty-one, resolution authorizing the city to enter into a cable franchise agreement and certain subsidiary agreements for other services arising from the cable franchise agreement with Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC.
Motion to hold for a cable cast public hearing. Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held for cable cast public hearing, bill twenty-one sixty-two.
Bill twenty-one sixty-two, resolution amending, resolution one thirty-eight, authorizing the mayor and director of innovation and performance on behalf of the city to revise the not-to-exceed funding amount to three million, five hundred thirty thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill twenty-one sixty-two.
Bill twenty-one sixty-three, resolution providing for the creation of the Technology Modernization Trust Fund and setting conditions for the deposit of revenue into and expenditures from the Technology Modernization Trust Fund.
Motion to approve brief discussion?
Second.
Second.
I mostly wanted to make sure that, um, members got any questions answered about this. We have, um, Director Norman, um, we have Director Paulus at the table. Um, I'll let them mostly explain this, but this is to allow for additional flexibility when it comes to, uh, innovation and performance is in a interesting position where they are managing the technology of all the departments of the city. And sometimes technology needs pop up mid-year, mid-budget year, unexpected and unbudgeted for, and there's no flexibility to be able to move around money to be able to provide them the tech needs that they need. So this is the thought from the, and the recommendation from the Technology Leadership Governance Committee, um, was to create a, a trust fund for these kinds of costs and needs. But I'll let, um, uh, Director Norman, Director Paulus address any gaps in my explanation or anything further.
Uh, thank you, councilperson, um, Heidi Norman, or acting director of the Department of Innovation and Performance. The Technology Leadership Council Governance Committee is made up of, uh, the chief of staff, the chief operating officer, chief economic development officer, uh, myself as director of innovation and performance and Director Paulus as, uh, director of, um, Office of Management and Budget. This group, this governance committee is responsible for reviewing I T project requests for the next budget year that come in through the various departments throughout government and making recommendations to the mayor and to the Office of Management and Budget for approval of those projects. Um, within that approval process, uh, we find it necessary to have a specific fund so, so that we are aware as a governance committee of how much money is allocated to new I T projects. Once those projects are approved, that fund is used for the first year of implementation of those projects, not for the sustain, sustaining and maintaining of those technologies. This is for the implementation portion. If, as, uh, the councilperson described, we have ad hoc unbudgeted projects which come up mid-year, um, we are then able to look at how much money we have in that fund and if necessary to reprioritize or reschedule um, the projects that have been approved in order to make room for any additional projects that come along. I'll ask, uh, Director Paulus to comment on the budgeting, um, and how it would work within the trust fund.
Thanks, Director Norman. Um, yes, like Director Norman alluded to, uh, in her explanation, uh, this trust fund would be set up to, uh, give us the flexibility to, uh, reprioritize, uh, all of these new technology projects as needed. Um, it also allows I M P, uh, the director, the Department of I M P to have an active role in the implementation, uh, of, of these technology projects. Uh, the way the trust fund would be funded uh, would be essentially like a transfer from our general fund, uh, into this trust fund. Um, and at the end, the, the one, uh, organizational difference of this fund that, that I think allows us to have flexibility is, when, once it is in this trust fund, um, the, the funds, unlike when they're in the general fund, would not lapse back into our, uh, our general fund balance. And I think that's important when you, uh, weigh out the considerations of implementation of technology projects because especially for the larger ones, they are very involved, uh, can have, uh, un- unintended consequences if there are delays. Um, and so oftentimes, if they are funded solely through the general fund, we run the risk of having the funds lapse into our general fund, uh, at the end of the year if implementation is not, uh, uh, complete at that time. So I think this allows us the flexibility to, uh, make sure the implementation is done correctly. Um, and through, uh, the scoring process of, of the, the leadership committee, um, gives us a holistic approach about, uh, what projects, uh, should be, uh, approved, uh, and, and explored for the following year and what citywide, uh, uh, impacts they have.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilman Strasberger?
No, thank you. Um, I'm, I'm fine.
Thank you. I've, I've got a bunch of hands. Councilman Wilson, Councilwoman Gross, Councilman Calkill.
Yeah, um, how much do we expect to be transferred into this trust fund?
Thank you.
Uh, in the mayor's proposed budget, uh, on the target budget page, we have one point four million dollars allocated to be transferred into this fund, uh, next year. Uh, nothing in the out years. Um, this could be, uh, reassessed every budget year on an as-needed basis. Um, and if this were to be approved, uh, this would then be, uh, include, this trust fund would be included in the trust fund section of the budget document for council's budget in December. Uh, we just didn't, uh, put it in that section until it was approved by you all. But one point four million dollars is the, uh, is the anticipated transfer as of now.
And so, just for clarity, this could, you could draw down funds from the, from this fund without council approval?
No, the, all, all projects and contracts would still have to go through, uh, the council approval process.
Okay, so this is essentially just a way for you to try and set money aside for the year so that, and then at, at this point, I'd like you to speak to me like I know nothing about technology. Um, so for instance, what, what, like what would happen? Like what would I, or the, or the city workers, you know, need halfway through the year or something that you'd have to, is that the, is it like the, the outlook three sixty-five account that we had to reauthorize? We have to buy more wires? What? Just give me like a real simple answer.
You're sure. So this, this piece of legislation does just establish that trust fund, like you were saying, to allow us to move the funds into there. Um, through that leadership committee that, uh, Director Norman outlined, uh, with the five, uh, the five personnel, uh, the one point four million dollars was arrived upon through the recommendation of specific projects such as uh, an agenda management system for the city clerk's department, um, some document migration, uh, via Sela, um, a one-stop P G H expansion, uh, along with some G P S, uh, tracking. So the one point four million dollars wasn't, isn't an arbitrary number. It is tied to, uh, specific projects and their one-time costs with, with some contingency worked in, uh, in case we do run into cost overruns. Um, but anything on top of that, I'll let Director Norman address.
How did you account for this in the past? Did you just um, amend the budget or?
No, that's, that's a very good question. Uh, we don't have slush funds, uh, in, in the budget, uh, in operating budget. So how we would address it in the past, and, uh, this is something that Director Norman has had to deal with many times, is, uh, you would have to look at any project that was, you know, on the, on the slate or the agenda to be, uh, deployed, um, and kind of reprioritize and reallocate existing funds within the operating budget to make it work. Um, but again, when, when you run into those long implementation periods is when, uh, you can often, uh, back yourself into a corner uh, with, with running the risk of having those funds lapse into the general fund, uh, for those projects.
Yeah, thanks for answering my questions. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
There we go. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for giving me the text file. Thank you, Councilwoman Strasberger, for letting me borrow your laptop screen. Um, so in creating trust funds, you have a section that says where you, um, how it gets money into it. And then another section that's how you get money out of it. And so this one is like the Mellon Park tennis bubble where we're just letting you do the expenditures without council approval and without public visibility, just as I was recapping earlier today with, um, when we changed the Parks Trust Fund. So, but that's exactly your, the, your reason for wanting it is that currently, as Director Paulus just said, if you've got an unexpected bump, which happens in technology implementation projects, right? All of a sudden, you need to hire another company to do some patching of some software programming. So one thing talks to another, or you need to pay for, I think, you know, I'm thinking about all of the resolutions I've seen coming from your department where you've had to ask council to change a budget number. That you wouldn't have to do that. You could just cover it from the technology trust fund. Did I recap your rationale accurately?
No, that's not entirely true. Any of these projects would have contracts assigned to them with not to exceed amounts. So for example, any one of the projects that I just listed to Councilman Wilson and to you all would have a not to exceed of fifty thousand dollars. If we had some additional cost overruns, first of all, that first contract would have to be legislated through you all. And then on top of that, if we were going to exceed that amount, we would have to submit, excuse me, submit a new piece of legislation for a new, not to exceed amount. So it would follow the council process.
So but, so my summary was only accurate up to fifty thousand, but not beyond fifty thousand?
I use fifty thousand as an arbitrary number in an example. It would be accurate for any contract with any amount, with any not to exceed amount.
You lost me. What's the point of the trust fund?
The trust fund is, the intention is to have a dedicated funding mechanism for IMP to control since they handle all citywide IT projects. There is a process that we have stood up internally to have technology projects proposed to a leadership committee in which they are either recommended or not recommended. At the point of that, after the recommendation point, we identify how much funding is needed for the implementation phases of those projects. This trust fund allows us to just harbor those funds to make sure that they are all accounted for. IMP can manage them and most importantly, manage the implementation of them. The recurring costs after implementation will live in each of the respective departments, departmental operation.
I understand the year one part. I thought that what I'm looking at says that the Director of Department of Innovation and Performance can expend the funds from the Technology Modernization Trust Fund. That, that's what I thought I heard you say in your description. That's what I think I'm reading. But you objected when I said that before.
Every trust fund that's set up needs a designated department to administer it. That line that you just read is just designating IMP to manage the trust fund. That does not mean that they would bypass the council project or process when entering into these contracts.
Okay, but expending the funds from the trust fund is what I'm asking about.
Yes, IMP would, after obtaining council approval with these contracts, they would have to initiate the expenses to the vendors once they're going through implementation. But that would be after, after, after every project is legislated in front of you.
Director, I don't want you to be defensive here. I want you to accurately answer the question. So I'm going to say it differently so that we're not confused and the public's not confused. There are different kinds of trust funds. In the Mellon Park Trust Fund, Mellon Park Tennis Bubble Trust Fund, Parks and Rec can expend those funds without that expenditure getting an authorization from council, correct?
Only for, only for certain expenses under a certain threshold.
Correct, okay. Can you say correct?
Correct, to a certain degree.
Yes, it is built into the structure of the trust fund, but the authorization to patch the tennis bubble and use the funds from the tennis bubble trust fund does not come before council. For every, if it's fifty dollars for some duct tape, it doesn't come to council.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So, and then other trust funds, it does. So this one, what I'm reading is that if you need to spend fifty dollars from this trust fund, it doesn't come to council.
It would, if, in your situation, it would fall under the threshold of going out for a contract. But these contracts would be for professional services of implementation in which they would come in front of city council.
That is not what I'm reading here. So there's, that's a point of confusion. Let's just, let's just leave it at that. And then the section two, which is actually what my question was, I really thought that was going to be the easy part. I thought we all, there was going to be no confusion on the, my first part of the question. I was like, okay, we all understand the expenditures. My real question is how the trust fund gets its revenue? It says, section two, following sources of revenue may be deposited into the Technology Modernization Trust Fund. It says, number one, direct transfers from the city general fund balance. Number two, existing grants dedicated to technology-related projects. Number three, private charitable donations. Number four, matching funds from charitable donations. I'm kind of curious what the city's general fund balance is right now. Does anybody know?
I don't know the exact balance, but I think the last time I checked a week or so ago, it was around seventy million.
Okay, so there's seventy million. This piece of paper, if we vote yes, let you take all seventy million and put it into this IT trust fund. Because there's no limits. There's no council authorization. What am I not understanding here? Because that's, that would be very deeply irresponsible of us to do.
The intent was for those transfers to be authorized through the budget process, which is why that amount is included on the target budget page in the mayor's budget. And that amount would be included in council's budget as well.
Well, then this language needs to reflect that, and it doesn't. So I think there just needs to be a little bit of work. If, I mean, I think you probably have some good intentions. But I just, so I thought I understood the expenditures part, and I was really concerned about the revenue part. And I also read additionally that while this very broad sentence, the following sources of revenue may be deposited, it doesn't say deposited by whom, it doesn't say deposited when, it doesn't have a process for depositing. It doesn't say that you can't accumulate them either. So it doesn't say you have to expend them on that year one and that there's a revisiting. You could grow this trust fund to be bigger than the city's entire, you know, assets. I mean, because you could, you can take private charitable donations, you can take existing grants, you can sweep things from matching funds, and you can, it doesn't say, there's no time limit. It's, this doesn't sunset, there's no auditing. And so this is just too loosey-goosey for me. So I have, I have a lot of questions. So I think maybe we can support your intent, but we need to hold the, this language and put those controls. This is just uncontrolled. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill, then we'll come back for the second round.
Yeah, just let me comment on it real quick. And Director Paulus, just in simple terms for me, this is like an umbrella fund for any glitches, IT glitches across the city in any department. Is that correct?
Yes, this fund would handle technology projects, the implementation of those projects.
Right. Now, the one point, the one point four million, is that what's anticipated that we would spend per year on such things? Or is that just thrown in there because it's for years to come? Or is it an anticipation as to what we would spend per year for such things?
No, that's a really good question. That's not for every year. The one point four million is only the transfer that's in the mayor's proposed budget for 2022. There is no other funds or transfers as of now that are being planned. And that one point four million dollars is tied to specific projects, like I was saying a little earlier to Councilman Wilson. So the intent of this trust fund is to just be able to fund the implementation of the approved projects through the leadership committee on like a one-to-one basis. So there would be, there would be an intent for all of these funds.
Right. And the intent is really for less complication on your end when you need these funds, rather than go back into the general fund and come to city council for approval of transporting funds for whatever the project may be. Just to have it more readily handy for you, is that really what the intent is here?
A little bit. The, most of the intent is to make sure that IMP can administer the implementations of, the implementation of these projects correctly, and they are aware of the statuses of all of them. If there are cost overruns, then the leadership committee who initially recommended these projects could go back and reprioritize if needed to cancel and exit a previously recommended project if we felt necessary.
Right. In any situation where you're using these funds, they're always tied to a contract with the city of Pittsburgh. And that contract has to come before us to be approved anyway. And that's where you're saying there is the transparency that we're looking for.
Correct.
Okay, that's it for me. I'll let, you know, you work out with the other council members who had concerns about the wording and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Right before a second round, Councilman Gross, to address at least one of your concerns, it may be easy enough to make a verbal amendment where on number one under section two, you would add direct transfers from the city's general fund balance not to exceed one point four million dollars. If your concern is second round, Councilman Strasburger.
Well, I didn't know if anyone else had comment. I was going to make a motion to hold for one week so that we can clarify the language and get some, just some clarification for council members with the directors that we have before us.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for making the motion to hold, but I just, generally, just don't like voting for trust funds. I feel like we have a budget for a reason, and I'm just not real comfortable creating all these trust funds that are ways, in my opinion, to circumvent council. So I think we need to keep an eye on contracts, and that's one way we can do it. For me, I'm going to, I'll pray vote no in the end, no matter what we do. But I do want to thank you for holding and agreeing to work through it. Thank you.
Strasburger?
Motion to hold one week.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, bill is recommended, bill twenty one forty five. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. First new papers, bill twenty one forty four.
Bill twenty one forty four, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the fifty nine forty one Penn Avenue project at fifty four forty nine, fifty nine forty one Penn Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second. Question, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, bill is recommended, bill twenty one forty five.
Bill twenty one forty five, resolution authorizing the approval of the twenty twenty two Housing Opportunity Fund Annual Allocation Plan, Council Districts All.
Motion to approve a discussion?
Second.
I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments, but I was happy to see that there was some addition of support for landlords and that it's about also retaining affordable housing in small projects, is the way I understand it. And it's a, it may be concerning to see that there's not a lot of support for rental and renters, but there's still many millions in the rental assistance pot that was funded with the federal funds that we are still encouraging people to apply for. Direction Housing, I had the county website memorized at one point, it's county, Rent Help PGH is, I know, one organization that's doing it. I know Lawrenceville United is taking applications, and there are many other organizations around the city that take intake if you're still struggling to make payments for rent and for utilities. And we encourage people to share that information and to reach out and to apply for the federal assistance that is still available. So that's all the comments that I wanted to make, but I just wanted to see if anyone else had anything.
Thank you. Councilwoman President Smith?
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone who serves on the Housing Opportunity Fund. I am a member of that, but I don't make all the meetings, but I make as many as I can. But I do want to say that there's a lot of people that are really dedicated to making sure that housing opportunities and affordable housing is available in the city of Pittsburgh. But actually, I really want to thank Kelly, who used to be our attorney for city council. She now is the chairperson of the board, and she's doing a really good job. So I really want to thank her. But I still have my same concerns I had when it was first formed, is that a lot of the groups that are on there are groups that, similar to what I said about the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy not serving on a board that determines where the park tax should go. These same groups are the groups that do a lot of work in housing and determining where the funding is going. So I feel like it's kind of incestual, like maybe that we should really think of a better way to allocate. But it's good because you have their expertise in some ways, but I don't know that they should be, and they do abstain when it comes to something for them personally, but I feel like there's just a little bit too, too close for comfort for some of the things. It's a lot of money, and I think with all contracts or anything that goes out, I always worry. But I do want to thank them because I think overall, everybody's doing a really great job there.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, I'll simply add, one, I also like you thank them for all the work. And as Councilwoman Gross pointed out, there's a lot of good and a lot of need for these dollars. But I also have somewhat of a concern. I'm certainly not going to vote against it. But I do have a concern that a good portion of the ten million is also going towards social service, decent work, essentially. And thus, we're not able to address the vacant properties that so many members of this council continue to discuss. We're not rehabbing them at the rate that we need. And so thus, we're also not fully addressing the shortage of affordable housing that we have within our city because so much of the dollars are being expended on social services. Which sort of takes us to a larger conversation that Reverend Burgess even brought to the table a couple of weeks ago about the need to really go after long-term dollars now that we can invest into bricks and mortar to really bring the number of units online that are necessary. Also think this council is going to need to revisit how much we send to the Housing Opportunity Fund. Should we potentially be investing more? And/or should we also extend the amount of time that we're sending money to the Housing Opportunity Fund? But that's all for other discussions, and we'll probably have a lot of it though in our budget.
I'm going to make sure I bring that up during our next meeting. Thank you.
So seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill twenty one forty six.
Bill twenty one forty six, resolution approving execution of a deed by and between the URA and the city for the cellar blocks twenty five A, lot two, in the twenty fourth ward, River Avenue, Council District One.
Motion to approve a discussion. I just wanted to give opportunity for comment here. There's a couple of things that are involved with this one. If, Councilman Wilson, if I'm not mistaken, this is where your DPW facility is moving to. And, but I feel the obligation to say that I was briefed that there is pending, there's ongoing litigation about the parcel, but I'm not privy to the details of the litigation. So I just felt obligated to say that this would be the city receiving from the URA a parcel on River Avenue that involves ongoing litigation that I'm not privy to. And my kind of unanswered, open-ended question that I didn't get an answer to is what does that, does that make the city the liable party in the litigation? What does that do? And, and I don't have more information to share. So, Councilwoman Wilson, I believe this is your parcel for your DPW facility.
I'm not aware of what you're, you know, the issue that you're bringing up, the pending litigation.
So, yeah, we do have, this is just provisional vote, but again, I feel like it's important that council members get the details. And so I just wanted to offer that up and maybe that will give us time to get the information so we know what we're voting for.
What are you, I don't understand what you're talking about.
I was informed there's litigation about this parcel, and I don't know any more details about it.
Who?
Don't know.
You don't know?
It was breached by the URA.
Oh, the URA said this.
Yeah, it's currently their property. So I don't know.
We have someone from the URA on?
Well, we wouldn't probably be able to get into details on air, so.
You need an executive session.
I mean, I don't even know if that's accurate, though.
I don't either. I have no way of confirming or denying it.
Could, do you mind?
I mean, this doesn't, sure.
That's all I have to say. That's as much as I know, and so I want to counsel. And so I want to counsel to to be I do see David jumped on. And so if he can, if he wants to tell me that I understood that and took the notes in my briefing incorrectly, that would be great. And if not, that'd be great, so.
David Geiger.
Sure, yeah. The councilwoman asked about the billboard that is located at the corner of the parcel and asked if there was pending litigation with Lamar related to that billboard. And I confirm that the U R A is currently in litigation with Lamar over that billboard and a potential breach of contract. I'm not sure how much more that I can say. We have our legal counsel here, but if members would like to know more, we can schedule executive session if that's the desire of the council.
I'm comfortable with that if I so I don't know if I still have the floor, but I'm comfortable if we just kind of we should know the facts before we do final vote.
President Smith and Councilman Coghill.
I was just going to say, could we do a preliminary vote now? Hold for an executive session, get it scheduled before final vote next week? And if members feel comfortable, then we'll move forward. And if not, we recommit it next week. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Councilman Coghill.
Yes, I first want to say, Councilman Wilson, if you get this Public Works Division built before mine, I'm going to be very upset, you know. You're on pace, by the way, all right. Secondly, you know, I actually showed this piece of property to to a gentleman who was interested in buying it some time ago. I think you and I had that conversation. And David, you can maybe answer this. I I understood that was city-owned property, correct? I mean, it might be litigation about the billboard, but the property itself is owned by the city of Pittsburgh, yes?
The the property is owned by the Urban Redevelopment Authority and the legislation before council would transfer to the city.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I happen to think it's a perfect place for a Public Works Division. You know, Councilwoman Wilson and I have been having conversations between he and I and some of the residents in, you know, Washington's Landing. And, you know, I think we'll dispel any, you know, doubts they might have about this being a good thing. But yeah, I hope it goes through, just not before my division, all right?
We'll slap a four on it and call it the fourth division.
Well, I mean, they come from anywhere in my in my division.
And the plan, the the plan is to learn from your experience. You would have the first net zero building, and we're looking to see how that turns out, so.
Can't wait to show you.
I'm going to wait my turn.
I just hope it's by next winter at this point.
Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, bill is recommended. Our last bill of the day, Bill 2166.
Bill 2166, Resolution Authorizing the U R A to Submit An Application To The Commonwealth Of Pennsylvania Department Of Community And Economic Development Keystone Communities Enterprise Zone Designation Program, Council Districts All.
Motion to approve a discussion.
Second.
So we have been participating in the enterprise zones with the state for many years now. This bill renews that tax credit opportunity, but it also expands the map to add, with the way I understood it, so other people at the table may understand it better, to include especially the streets that are included in the U R A's prior avenues of hope priorities to invest in small businesses and local businesses in those districts. So it's great news.
Any further discussion?
I just thank Councilwoman Gross for her work on this. Thank you.
All those, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, bill is recommended. That does exhaust our agenda. We do have some meeting announcements. Budget meetings will begin this afternoon at 1:30 PM with the Office of Management and Budget, chaired by myself. Budget meetings will continue tomorrow, Thursday, November 18, for the Department of Public Safety at 10 AM chaired by Councilman O'Connor, and the Department of Permits, License, and Inspections at 1:30 PM chaired by Councilman Wilson. All budget meetings will be streamed live via the City Channel Pittsburgh on YouTube. Also, Thursday evening at 6 PM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on bills 1986, 1943, and 2059 as they relate to the pension offset. Speaker registration will close at 3 PM Thursday afternoon. To register, fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage. We also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. And also due to the Thanksgiving holiday next week, council will hold both our regular and standing committee meetings on Monday, November 22 at 10 AM and 1:30 PM respectively. Do we have anything from members?
Okay, just make a register an aye vote for the votes I missed, Rosa. Thank you.
Yeah, I've actually the last couple of days, I've gotten this question a couple of times. So I want to make sure I'm answering it correctly. I I have been asked several times if the public will have the opportunity to comment at our budget hearings. And what I've told them is it's not a public hearing, all of the ones you see, like the one today at 1:30. It's a budget hearing. Council is hearing from the city department. So in fact, while you'll see us here at the table, while we'll be livestreamed and on television, it is not a public hearing. So what I've been telling people is that please do pay attention to the budget. Please do watch the budget hearings, and you're able to make public comment to council usually twice a week, sometimes more, every Tuesday and every Wednesday. Usually next week it'll be double sessions on Monday that we always hear public comment at the beginning of every session. And that includes, you know, every final vote and every committee hearing usually twice a week. And then there's that additional public hearing at the end that's usually about the tax amounts. But so but that we often hear some comment about the budget expenditures as well. So is that all accurate? That's all accurate. All right, so yes, that's all I've been telling people. So just so for clarity, so we welcome public comment, but the budget hearings are not public comment hearings.
But we do have one that's on December 13.
Great, and it's an evening one or daytime one?
So I just I actually mentioned to Madam Cross that I'd like to schedule a couple more. So we have maybe something on a Saturday like we did before, something in the in the evenings. I thought about having like different.
That's right, the December 13 one is like 10 10 AM, maybe. Does anyone know offhand?
Which one is it?
The December 13 public hearing.
1:30.
10 AM. Okey dokey. All right, that's all, thank you.
But we'll schedule a couple more.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burgess.
Be very brief. I, although she didn't say this, I've been talking to Councilwoman Strasburger about this and to the president. I think we need to not need, I think we can think about a total public engagement process that brings the public into council more over the next year so that it doesn't occur just at the end. And council president started that process when we had the listing sessions on the A R P funding. I think that and I work with all council, I think we can put up a process over the next for the next year that will be a more aggressive process of of soliciting and engaging the public. And so I hope to work with council members to make that a reality in 2022. It would be one of my priorities.
Also, I just want to alert members, next Monday I will be here at 1:30 to cheer the meeting, but at 2:15 I'm going to have to step away. At 2:30, we have the ribbon cutting for the cap, which we just named Frankie Pace Park, the newest park in the city that will go over 579. And that's at 2:30 tomorrow with the governor, I mean, Monday, excuse me, I said 2:30.
People wish I would park on Tuesday.
Many others coming in, so I will step away. Council president will continue, and if we finish in time, I'll be back. So just wanted to make you aware.
Can I chime in one more for another ribbon cutting? So I wanted to give a shout out to the Highland Park Super Playground, the community committees and DPW and and I believe the mayor were at the groundbreaking today. It's been a long time coming project that's been in the planning phases for a long time. The wooden structures will continue to be a wooden structure, but it'd be a different wooden structure because that one has some areas that are already closed and are dangerous. It was built by the community in the 1980s, and it's made of wood. And it is long, you know, it's collapsing in part. And so there's been a long running process of of redesigning it. And I missed that groundbreaking this morning, which was at 11 o'clock because I wanted to be here with you all.
Super playgrounds, this one about a tennis court or no?
Um, the the tennis courts are kind of like on the Bryant Street. So no, not the not the tennis courts on Stanton. But the yeah, it the one up around Reservoir Drive, right near the the entrance on Highland Avenue.
My kids played in it.
I know, I know. It's so loved, it's so loved. There will still be kind of boats and wooden structures, but it it's a slightly different design. The public can find it on the Art Commission website, maybe even on the the city planning's new Engage platform, I think. So we had lots of lots of public input, and it's gotten all approvals.
Wonderful. With that, we need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn our meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
They are adjourned.